I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of April 18th, 2019, to order. Would the Clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Excused.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Muratato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guess what, Trustee Schmidt? It's your turn.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Join us Saturday, May 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon for coffee with the Mayor and Village Board at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Mayor or Village Board, please call the Mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. To enable an efficient and effective street sweeping schedule, parking on streets is prohibited during the months of April and May between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on one specific day each week. Color-coded no-parking signs have been posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village's website. Questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Are you thinking about spring projects at home? Before you start, be sure to contact Community Development Department. Many projects require permits, including things like new decks, sheds, patios, siding, and roofing. Call the Community Development Department to find out if your spring project requires a permit at (630) 260-6030. Summer is around the corner, and GH-2O Aquatic Center will be opening Memorial Day weekend on May 25th. Purchase your pool passes between May 1st and May 18th for discounted rates. Benefits to becoming a member include priority entrance at 11:30 a.m. and discounts on swim lessons, swim team registration, pool rentals, and more. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a number of seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH-2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and the Parks, Recreation, and Facilities Department. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, youth program counselors, and many others. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact Human Resources at (630) 909-5357. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Muratato?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Stop by Glendale Lakes Golf Club this Friday, April 19th, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for our final Fish Fry of 2019. Try some great food at great prices. Enjoy our All You Can Eat Fish Fry, soup in the cellar bar, or other appetizers and other items off our new menu. Call (630) 260-0095 to make a reservation today. Glendale Lakes Golf Club Annual Spring Fling has been rescheduled for Sunday, May 5th, with a noon shotgun start. The cost to play in the event is $300 per team or $75 per golfer. Golfers will receive 18 holes of golf with a cart, lunch and dinner, a drink ticket, a raffle ticket, and a tee prize. There are only a few spots remaining, so be sure to make your reservation today by contacting Glendale Lakes Golf Club at (630) 260-0018.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojak?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Do you have unwanted or old cell phones, retired U.S. flags, bikes, batteries, and other recyclables? Drop them off at the One Stop Reuse and Recycling Depot on Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. All items can be dropped off at the GH-2O Aquatic Center parking lot located at 240 Civic Center Plaza. Items not accepted include hazardous waste, large appliances, and CFL bulbs. All televisions or monitors will only be accepted by purchasing a voucher at www.esscrap.org/GlendaleHeights or via credit card at the event. Document shredding will also be available at the event with a limit of two boxes per vehicle. For more information or a complete list of accepted items, visit glendalehighs.org or call (630) 260-6000. Beginning the week of April 22nd, IDOT will begin a major construction project on North Avenue. This project involves a concrete patching from Gary Avenue to Illinois 53 and will take the majority of the summer. We encourage regular commuters to find alternate routes during this construction period. If you have any questions, please contact IDOT at 1-800-452-IDOT. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroder?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Glendale Lakes Golf Club is hosting their annual Mother's Day brunch on Sunday, May the 12th, from 10:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Now brunch will include a carving and an omelet station, various salads, breakfast and lunch, children's items, and a sweet table. The cost is only $30 for adults, $15.50 for children ages 5 through 12, and children under 4 are free. So call today to make a reservation at (630) 260-0095. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. We have three proclamations in front of us tonight. The first one is to proclaim April 22nd, 2019, as Earth Day. Next is a proclamation to proclaim April 26th, 2019, as Arbor Day. And the third one is a proclamation to proclaim April 28th through May 5th, 2019, as Days of Remembrance. So if there are no objections, I will sign the proclamations. Keith, did you want to talk to us?
Well, thank you, Mayor and Board, for having this opportunity to talk a little bit about Tree City USA and Arbor Day. Tree City USA is a program -- let's see if I can get this to work here. So far, so good. Tree City USA is a program sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation in cooperation with the USDA Forest Service and National Association of State Foresters to provide direction, technical assistance, public attention, and national recognition for urban and community forestry Glendale Heights is one of 174 communities within Illinois that is currently a Tree City USA. But before we talk about Tree City, it's Arbor Day, and I know that the village is celebrating its 60th anniversary this year, and they've been putting all these facts in the newsletters, so I've got fun Arbor Day facts to share. So Arbor Day is a celebration of trees and their importance to providing shelter, stabilization for the ground, and beauty to the beholder. And it was started by Julius Sterling Morton, that gentleman on the picture, who began it on April 10th of 1872 in the state of Nebraska, where on that date, he was able to get over a million trees planted in Nebraska. Since that time, there are a number of different countries and states that started the process, and in 1970, President Nixon declared Arbor Day a federal holiday and is observed the last Friday in April each year, which means that on April 26th next week, we will be celebrating Arbor Day. The last thing I want to talk about is that a single tree -- Arbor Day is important because of what the trees do to the community. A single tree can absorb as much as 48 pounds of carbon dioxide per year and can sequester a ton of carbon dioxide by the time it reaches 40 years old. To put that in perspective, an average car creates 11,000 pounds of CO2 in a year. So we need the trees, and we're glad that we're able to be a Tree City here, and to thank you to the Board for making sure that we continue on that process of reforested the village after the Emerald Ash Borer. Our Arbor Day celebration will take place, as I said, on Friday, April 26th, with the Parks Division along with the Village of Glendale Heights preschool students, celebrating by planting a tree on campus. This year, that tree will be located by GH-2O. And in the PATH After School Program, students will participate in the exercises to learn the benefits of tree and their roles in the environment. And these are a couple of pictures from last year's celebration where we planted a tree. Last year, we put it right outside of the Sports Hub, and everybody gets to put some dirt on it and put some water on it. And then PATH went about and did some additional learning after school, which will also be done again this year. We are also proud to announce that the Village of Glendale Heights is the proud recipient of the Tree City USA Award for the 22nd year. We were just notified early in April, and actually, we'll be receiving our award -- this is actually last year's picture -- but we are receiving our award next Tuesday, so we will have a new picture to put into our presentation for next year. But we hope that if you have any questions on trees or any trees in the community, please contact us, and we'd be happy to help you out with those as we go. Thanks for the time.
Keith, just one more fact you can add to that sheet.
Okay.
Jay Sterling Morton, my high school in Cicero was named after him, so you can add that, too.
Okay, I'll put that in next year's notes.
Wow.
That that's on there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Keith, and congratulations to your department for getting the Tree City Award once again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Recognition of the GFoa Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting and the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Recently, the village received notice of two financial report awards bestowed by the Government Finance Officers Association, GFoa. On February 11th, 2019, the GFoa notified the village that its fiscal year 2019 budget document was the recipient of the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This marks the sixth consecutive year in which the village has received this recognition. The award reflects the commitment of the village to meet the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to be considered for the award, the village had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well the village's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. On March 27th, 2019, the GFoa notified the village that its fiscal year 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFA, was being recognized for a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is the 36th consecutive year in which the village has received this honor. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The CAFA was judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFA. Both of these reports are available for review on the village's website at www.glandalehighs.org. Just click on Departments, then Finance, and then Financial Reports. My sincerest appreciation to members of the executive staff and the entire finance department team for these achievements. Wonderful job, once again, staff and your department, Bill. You guys are great. Thank you, Mayor. And next, we would like to recognize students in Builders Clubs and Key Clubs. Could Vince Savansky, President of Quanis, Isabel Baldwin, Quanis Representative to Builders Club, and Connie Barreras, Quanis Membership, and more, M&M, please come up to the podium?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I am Vince Savansky, and I work at the Glen Side Public Library, and it's my honor for this past year to be the president of the Quanis Club. And it's exciting tonight because the reason why you have a large crowd here, mostly, I'm sure, is because many of the kids in the audience here, the young people, are from the Builders Club. So let me talk a little bit about the Builders Club. The Quanis Club actually is one big family. We sponsor, in our area, two such groups. We sponsor what's called a Builders Club, and we sponsor what's called Key Club. You're probably more familiar with the Key Club because the Key Club has been around for a long time, and that's a high school unit of Quanis. But for Builders Club, you might think, "Well, what is that? Do they make toys? Do they make, like, electronics? Is this some kind of a steam thing?" Actually, no. The Builders Club is building our future leaders. The Quanis motto is serving children of the world, and this group of young people are actually people who serve other children. So they are young people who are serving children as well. Some recent activities that they have been involved with include many other village activities that you will recognize, but they have volunteered at Christmas Sharing Food Drive and Sorting. They've helped with Christmas wrapping. They've worked on Valentine's for Vets, which I guess are older children? I'm not sure. They did Breakfast with the Bunny, and they recently were at the Easter Egg Hunt. Other service projects include, at Christmas time, they did an Operation Christmas Child, where they actually fundraised at their school, and they purchased small gifts from the Dollar Store that they put into a shoebox-sized box, and then that was sent overseas to needy children. That was a lovely project they were involved with, and they did a great job. I went shopping with them. It was fun. They also volunteer regularly at First Front, which is a group that is supportive of people who have cancer in their families. Not the people have the cancer and their family, not the family has cancer. Okay. Food packing at Feed My Hungry Children, our hungry child. And then year-round, they collect Pop Tabs, and those are donated to Ronna McDonough in Winfield. And last year, when they took them, they actually got a tour of the building. I'm not sure what happened this year when they went, but they take them and present them to the school. This is a group that has lots of school spirit, and they find Builders Club a comfortable place where they are supported by their teacher-advisors. They learn to become leaders in their school community, and we're just extremely proud of them. So let's give all of them a hand. To meet them up close and personal, we're going to have the school teacher-advisors come up, and they are wonderful. They are so energetic and so great with the kids, and it's because of their enthusiasm that the kids are so enthusiastic. So we want to thank Jen Simon and Jill Lowey, and they're going to come now and say the
Thank you for those kind words. On behalf of Builders Club, I would like to announce the following students. Abigail Gallegos.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Anai Cortez.
Congratulations.
Danielle Jimenez.
Danielle.
Diane Jimenez.
Congratulations.
Ella Fermansky.
Congratulations.
Jocelyn Marshan.
Congratulations.
Justin Kio.
You're welcome.
Noof Ahmad.
Congratulations.
Peyton Fermansky.
Thank you.
Erin Reynoso.
Thank you.
And Vanessa Munoz.
Thank you.
And from Glenbard West, Patricia Madell.
Thank you.
Kaylee Nguyen.
Thank you.
Mahak Sharma.
I'm a hack, yeah. You could hit her nice. Sorry.
Hi. Is anyone else? Is that you?
Yeah.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you all for your service to your community.
And I'd just like to add, on behalf of the village and the Village Board, that we are very proud of you for your service and your community. Keep it up because you are our future leaders, and you're doing a great job. You got a certificate. Everybody got a certificate of recognition, and also two individual pool passes for the aquatic park that you can use after we open. Thank you for your hard work.
We have to build more, do we, staff? All right, we'll go right here first. One, two, three. We'll get one more. One, two, three. All right. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you. Great job.
The kids and the families are invited downstairs then, too, for--
Does somebody want to take--
A reception.
--for the ones that weren't here?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. You're welcome.
Now go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Dean Nun, you have the consent agenda before you. What is your pleasure? Trustee Schmidt?
Move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Muratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business, so new business number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business item number two. Trustee Schroder?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is waived on item number two. Which is an ordinance rejecting all bids for the maintenance to drainage structures in Seams Park, Glendale Heights. First reading has been waived. This would be ordinance number 2019-28. Trustee Pojak?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Trustee Muratato?
Is this the one that we are doing in-house?
No. No, it's not.
Okay. What is this one?
This is cleaning the flared end sections at Seams Park, re-leveling the park basin, the detention basin.
Okay, so are we doing this -- are we going to be doing this in-house?
No, this was out to bid by a contractor, and it's been rejected.
I know, but I mean, it's not going out for bid again, is it?
The intention, Pat, is to -- Trustee Muratato is to take this out to bid one again. In this case, we only received one bid. We want to review the scope of the project and try and get the bid to come in a little bit lower the next time.
My question is, when we bought that -- when we purchased that Bobcat with the tracks, wasn't that for doing work like this?
The work that's required at Seams Park is -- requires a laser and leveling very accurately. The Bobcat's more for dredging creeks and channels.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
No, that was my question before. Why wasn't rejected?
Okay. Any further discussion?
Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Muratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 2019-28 is approved. Number three, an ordinance denying the application for a text amendment to Section 11-10B-3 entitled "Conditional Uses" of Article B entitled C2, Community Commercial District of Chapter 10, entitled "Commercial Districts," of Title 11, entitled "Zoning Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois." This is from the April 4th Committee of the Whole Meeting, and this is first reading. Number four, an ordinance to deny an application for a conditional use permit for outdoor storage of vehicles on the premises commonly known as 325 East Army Trail Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is--
Is this the one that we are doing in-house?
No. No, it's not.
Okay. What is this? What is this one?
This is cleaning the flared end sections at Seams Park and re-leveling the park basin, the detention basin.
Okay. So, are we doing this? Are we going to be doing this in-house?
This was out to bid by a contractor and it's been rejected.
I know, but I mean, it's not going out for bid again, is it?
The intention, Pat, is to, Trustee Muratado, is to take this out to bid one again. In this case, we only received one bid. We want to review the scope of the project and try and get the bid to come in a little bit lower the next time.
My question is, when we bought that, when we purchased that Bobcat with the tracks, wasn't that, wasn't that for doing work like this?
The work that's required at Seams Park is, requires a laser and leveling very accurately. The Bobcat's more for dredging creeks and channels.
Thank you.
Any questions?
That was my question before. Why wasn't rejected?
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Muratado. Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Ordinance 2019-28 is approved. Number three, an ordinance denying the application for a text amendment to Section 11-10B-3 entitled "Conditional Uses" of Article B entitled C2 Community Commercial District of Chapter 10 entitled "Commercial Districts" of Title 11 entitled "Zoning Regulations" of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is from the April 4th Committee of the Whole Meeting and this is first reading. Number four, an ordinance to deny an application for a conditional use permit for outdoor storage of vehicles on the premises, commonly known as 325 East Army Trail Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is also from the April 4th Committee of the Whole and this is first reading. Number five is an ordinance amending the Personnel Policy Manual of the Village of Glendale Heights. This is first reading. We now go back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Trustee Schroder.
Motion to adjourn. Did you have, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Was there a second?
Yes.
How'd you hear that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned and Mary, it's all yours.
I would like to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Thursday, April 18th, 2019 to order. Would the clerk please note to his present?
Noted.
All right. Are there any additions or deletions? None? All right. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the board? Okay. All right. Committee recommendations. Plan Commission, a recommendation to approve an application for an amendment to a previously approved conditional use in the C3 General Commercial District to permit outdoor storage of up to five semi trucks and trailers for the property located at 780 East North Avenue. That's Ramada Inn. All right. Move it to the board. Chester, move it to the board.
Pardon?
Move it to the board.
Second.
Second. All right. Is there any discussion? Yes, Pat?
We are, okay, I have a little problem with this. I mean, I don't think five trucks. You know, we're talking a 53 footer trailer. Then add the tractor on it. I drove there. I was in that parking lot and I don't know, five, five seems like a little too many. And then I guess he came, he asked you Joan for, what else did he ask for when he...
Actually, the applicant did not, but one of the employees of the facility asked if he could also park an RV in that area or elsewhere on the site, but that was not part of the original application. So, in order to consider that, that would have to come back again so that we can't consider it, or the Village Board can't consider an additional area or an RV at this point.
Okay. I just want to let the board know how I feel about it. I don't know how, you know, the rest of the board feels, but I mean, I'm not, I'm not for this at all, to be honest with you.
Chester.
Yeah, I agree with Pat. Maximum would be five semis, but what about a motor home, a huge motor home in there? How many, are you going to allow? Six vehicles now or just five? You know what I'm saying? And then at the Plan Commission was brought up about hazardous materials being stored in some of those trucks. I don't see it on here. Because I don't think the fire department would allow that. I know it was brought up at the Plan Commission.
It was. It's actually in the recommendation. It's number seven, parking of any trucks that are placarded in any manner containing hazardous cargo is prohibited. So, it was, if the board were to choose to approve it, that would be a condition that those are prohibited.
Now, if a guy pulls in with a semi with a placard with a hazardous material, how will the desk know that? Is he going to keep his mouth shut and just park there? You know what I'm saying?
It would be up to code enforcement. It would be up to the police department to notice that.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I just can't see our police department running around. I mean, for that, when they got other things they have to worry about besides going through a parking lot and looking and, I mean, I just, you know, just to let you know how I feel.
Trustee Light.
I've been by this property. I go by it twice a day, at least six days out of the week. I have noticed not very many trucks parking there. I have seen maybe at the most three trucks. I had noticed one of them that was parked closer to the building. It was just the tractor itself. It was not an entire truck that was facing the building. It was blue in color. I know it's not supposed to be parked there. I did notice a motor home. I did notice that they were parked further back, close to residence houses, which make me a little nervous because if they, you know, they are pulling in or moving around, they are going to make quite a bit of noise and being that they're spending the night most of the time, they're going to be noisy at night most of all, when most residents are trying to relax and maybe get some sleep. That was my only concern. I mean, like I said, I did not see, you know, five or six trucks at one time ever parking there. It's tough, it's a tough call, but I'm not happy with the placement of them going that far back and I don't want them on the street either, close to the street. It's just a lot of trucks to put in that lot. A lot.
Trustee Bill.
Joanne, how deep is this parking lot?
The lot is 578 feet deep, so probably, parking lot's probably about 560 with the setback, roughly.
Okay. So, just assuming that you have five trucks with a 54 foot trailer and 20 foot tractor on there, nose to tail of the 370 feet. So, we would need some sort of spacing between the trailers in order for maneuverability so that they could park the middle rig, if you will, in and out. Has that been considered?
It was. The staff, the applicant originally asked for 14 trucks. Staff evaluated the proposal and recommended that they be, if, again, if approved, in a certain area and behind the frontage of the building along one side. What we don't know is what combination are going to be tractors or tractors and trailers. So, rather than have a unknown amount, we indicated, again, if approved, a maximum of five and within a designated area. So, if it ends up being five tractors, that could fit, of course, in a smaller area. So, in your packet, there's a plan that's crosshatched that, where staff would not want any that are going to be directly visible from the street. That would, we would believe that would be detrimental.
Chester.
Joanne, I know this was brought up at the Plan Commission. Did they make the change? The maximum is two days they can park?
Correct. Two consecutive days.
That's it then. And also, was it noted, no reefers?
It was. I'm looking.
Because of the noise, they have to keep them, things running.
No idling of trucks and I just want to make sure, sorry.
It's number 10 in the conditions.
Oh, number 10, thank you. I was reading through. Sorry, number 10. So, number eight is no idling and number 10 is the refrigerated. Mike actually reads much quickly, but more quickly than I do apparently.
Thank you, Joanne.
Any further discussion? Yes, Mayor.
I have a couple of questions. So, am I understanding correct that there was a trailer parked there without the cab attached to it?
It was just the tractor itself. It wasn't, there was no trailer attached to it.
The trailer wasn't there. It was the tractor. Are they allowed to unhook and take the cab and go and just leave the trailer sit there for two days?
No. It was not in the intent and I'm going to refer to that again and see if we...
Number nine.
Number nine. Thank you.
Okay.
Number nine, no. Trailer drops and trailer parking without the tractor are prohibited.
This almost, and we do have a way to check and make sure that they are actually staying there, rather than...
Right.
They live in the area and they're going to pay to park their truck there for two nights and then pick it up and go.
What the police department recommended is that they be given a tag, so they check into the hotel, they put a tag on the tractor and then they, the hotel operator fax or email or dispatch every evening what, what trucks will be there for the evening and it's two consecutive evenings. So, they have to be hotel-registered guests and they have to conform with those requirements.
I mean, I understand the truck driver driving over the road and you're tired, you want to sleep in the bed for a night, but I don't want this to become a truck stop, truck depot. It's not, it's not what that building was set up for nor the parking lot or anything. So, I just want to make sure we do keep an eye on that because I don't want to see it misused.
Pat, did you have more to say?
I, I just don't want to see all these trucks parked there in winter time when it's 10 below zero and they're all running. I mean, I just, I can't see it.
Bill, did you...
Chief, if any of the conditions are violated, what recourse does the Village have?
Well, currently, we don't allow parking on the parking lot in, in a commercial. We don't allow semi trucks to be parked in a parking lot overnight currently. We would have to include these conditions into our ordinance, I believe, that is a violation of the ordinance.
And ultimately, we could revoke the conditional use.
What I see though is somebody saying, "I'll take a $25 ticket as a cost of doing business." That's my, you know, part of my overnight stay and what we want doesn't get followed.
Okay. Without further discussion...
Wait, question.
All right, there are more. I'm sorry.
Could you just clarify the wording and the motion? Because I think it was with no recommendation.
It was just move to the board.
Just move to the board?
Correct.
Okay. Can we get a, when the time comes, can we get a...
Did you want to say something?
Yes.
Just in, in reply to Trustee Schmidt, I mean, that's what happens now. So, I mean, the, the whole point of this is that there was issues in that parking lot with semi trucks parking and us issuing them tickets regularly, which brought this to light. So, the Ramada came, tried to figure out a way to allow trucks to park there because they were getting ticketed.
The trucks that were given tickets and stuff, Doug, before, were they there more than one night that you know of?
Yeah, I don't know that answer, but this, this came to light because of tickets being issued to the trucks that were parked there overnight and the drivers staying at the hotel.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we have a, can we have a roll call vote?
You want a roll call vote? Otherwise, yes?
Did we do a roll call?
Pat, this just to send it to the board because that's where you've got to take final action. So, this is not...
This is not a recommendation.
No. I mean, you could send it to the board without a recommendation.
That's what we're doing.
Okay. You're going to have no recommendation.
Right.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. So, this would be all in favor of a recommendation to approve?
No.
No.
Would you like me to call the roll?
Pardon?
Would you like me to call the roll and see how each person votes?
Yes. Okay.
Let me, let me, let me ask you a question. Do we have to send this to the board?
Yes.
No matter what?
Yes. They, they filed an application and we have to up or down vote it. Yes.
Okay. So, if you vote no now, it still goes to the board?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if you vote yes, it sends it to the board so you are able to vote whichever way you want.
At the next meeting or whenever.
Yes.
Do you...
Right?
Yeah. But I'm just sensing that maybe at least one trustee would like to make a recommendation to deny the request and if you're looking to do that, if that's not what you want to do, that, you could let it go like this, but there's no direction how to prepare the ordinance. You have to really prepare too.
That was my question because I like to make a recommendation.
Well, you've got a motion on the floor.
We do have a motion on the floor.
You have a motion on the floor, so if you want, the person that made the motion can withdraw and the second can withdraw a second and you can then accept a new motion.
I will withdraw the motion previously stated.
I don't know who seconded with the second.
I don't either.
President Jackson?
I did.
Yes, you did.
Okay then.
Honest.
Oh, I take it back.
Okay. So, if, that would mean that there's no recommendation on the table and so if you wished to make a recommendation to approve or deny, you could make that now.
All right, Pat.
Can I make a recommendation and send it to the board for denial?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it will be sent to the board. Number two is a Plan Commission recommendation to approve an amendment to the Village of Glendale Heights Official Comprehensive Master Plan Future Land Use Map to insert the new 2019 Future Land Use Map drawn by Christopher B. Burke Engineering, which will replace the 1995 Comprehensive Master Plan to amend land use plan. Yes, Mayor?
Move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Discussion. Did someone second that?
Yes. Trustee Light.
Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll move it to the board with a recommendation to concur. There is a no other business? Yes, Mayor?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's adjourned.
Thank you.